For some of us, for some of you perhaps the first time, this is a reconvening of the planning board meeting, Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021. We had covered some of our more routine agenda items in another venue a short time ago and we're just continuing with the discussion with regards to Tobin Road, I mean, sorry, Tobin Farms Estates, excuse me. And as I was, I think in the process of saying, Mr. Watroba, who's a member of the board, has provided us with some information regarding a procedure for road conversion or conversion slash acceptance from the town of Mashpee. I think we broke at a point where I was making reference to Chapter 257 of the Streets and Sidewalks, Article 5, Road Betterment, which is part of the Town of Dudley bylaws. And I think my thought before we finally transitioned down here was that those would be the bylaws by which any action we might take would be, have to be in conformity with that, although we might consider suggesting perhaps at some point a change to that.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, whether it be something along the lines of what we now know of Mashpee Plan, what would work in town here, but if it was something along these lines, I would also like to say that that's like our last ditch effort. And the reason why is Mr. Horn very eloquently pointed out the fact that if the town takes on hiring to do the work that needs to be completed in Tobin Farms, they have to pay prevailing wage, and it will be a lot more expensive that way. So, I just want to say that this would be like, this is if nothing else we come up with works out. So, we could probably put this discussion about this off. I think I may have, I now think I was premature in getting that information to the board.
No, 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 no.
Only we needed this juncture. Hopefully, we're going to come up with a better, a better solution.
And I think everything, you know, that you've brought up and everything that, some of the things at least that we've discussed will hopefully get us to that better solution. And at some point, and I'm still very unclear as to when and how that's going to happen, I think we have to get some input from the residents, from the people that are actually living there.
We're going to get that research we talked about. We need to know exactly where are we with what waivers have been granted, what waivers can we grant, you know, things like that. So, that's, that's why I, I told the town planer that I'd be willing to work with the intern that's doing the research now, share with her what I've uncovered, and maybe between the two of us, we can uncover some of these answers that we're looking for and help us move forward.
Now, Mr. Watroba has done a lot of heavy lifting in terms of research into this and hopefully, working with the intern, they can come to, you know, get to the bottom, if you will. It's almost like an archaeological dig, it seems. When are we going to find that last bone down there? Hopefully, we're getting closer to it. But I understand and appreciate that we all would like to see this finally accepted by the town, as I'm sure the residents would, and I think other members of the town boards would like to see it completed as well. So, just get that across the finish line once and for all. Moving on then, we have Lyons Estates.
Well, we'll talk about that soon.
Okay.
Why don't we get back to the main agenda now?
All righty. So, then we have continuation of Mr. Skakowski, is he still here? Do we want to, can we get him in here, you think?
He was here.
Oh, there you are. Would you introduce yourself and your affiliation?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just, I just want to quick point of, Bill, is there anything that says that we can put off reorganization of the board until after all this, or is this, should reorganization happen before we make any of these decisions?
It's up to you, I think, if you want to reorganize.
I'm fine with reorganizing after we take care of the heavy lifting here, if everybody else is.
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to.
All right. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Scott Skakowski, I'm here tonight as a, as still the chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission, because we did have a meeting, but we chose not to reorganize yet because some members couldn't be there. So, yeah, it is, it is up to you. The reason I'm here is to just try to clarify and get on the same page, I guess, as to subdivisions and, and how water sewer fits into the planning and control and organization of it all. And you've, you've already spoken a bit about, about it, because you know, you know what's going on, the Lyons Road Estates and some confusion that, that occurred there, that we, we just want to be able to nip in the bud and, and fix moving forward. We, I guess the, the number one concern that was wanted to be brought forward here was to affirm the, anything that changed, with this and with any other project, anybody wants to build a house or wants to tie into water and sewer, they come and see us, and they have to provide plans. This is what we're going to do. And then we approve them or disapprove them, or we have them change them, or whatever happens. With this particular project, we approved a plan to, for sewer for all 18, I believe it's 18 houses, for all 18 houses, and that they were going to tap wells. That particular part of town has very low water pressure, because it's at the same level as the tank that provides that pressure, Bates Road. So, the pressures are very low up in that area, so we have to be really careful about what we do with water. We had originally approved a hydrant, because the hydrant that sits there is across Lyons Road. If there were any ever a need to tap that hydrant and run water down, down, this is called Truman Ave, they, it would cross Lyons Road and block traffic. So, we asked, can you just tap it, tap the main, put a hydrant across the street at the top of the hill? And that's all we were going to allow, because the issue, you know, there are, there are many issues that arise with, with all of that. So, they decided to, they were going to tap, drop wells for each one of the houses, and they weren't going to tie into town water. Somehow, in the process, the fire department was, was, was asked what their opinion was, and they asked to have the hydrant moved down the hill. Whatever happened, it happened. The, and I don't fault the, the fire chief or the fire department or anybody else for that. It was, I think it's just a misunderstanding. In any case, if anything is ever changed on a water or sewer plan, it has to come back to us in order to, to review. If we have to, we bring in engineers to look at it and make sure. But the issue that arose there, that hydrant got moved down, 800 feet down the road, that's 800 feet of eight-inch main, that eight-inch main will hold better than 2,000 gallons of water. Nothing is tapping that main, so none of that water will ever move unless the hydrant is open. If that hydrant is opened, it's going to draw that water out, but it's also going to draw all the water off of Lyons Road down that hill. With the low pressure, it just, it, it, there are hydraulic issues. So, that pipe is sitting there with, say, 2,000 gallons of water in it, and just, let's just say further down Lyons Road, there's a fire. The fire department hits one of those hydrants, starts pulling water, they're going to pull that water back out of that pipe and into the main, which is up now where the roads are. That water, you know what happens to water when it sits? Even chlorinated water, the chlorine eventually breaks down, and that wa, it becomes a water quality issue. Bacteria, whatever, that gets sucked back up in there and then has the, the ability to be pulled into somebody's house if they happen to turn, open their faucets. So, it just, that, that was the main reason why we didn't want to do it. And, you know, we, we talked with the developer and we came up with a plan to, to deal with all of that. Unfortunately, it was, it's costly, but that's what, that's what ended up happening. But in, in any case, what we want to do is, I think somebody mentioned earlier about having joint meetings, and I think that's probably a good idea. I don't have a full understanding of subdivisions, to be honest. Thank you for taking that on, because let me tell you, subdivision planning and all of that, no, that's not for me. But where it pertains to water and sewer, and how the systems are designed, and how, what's, what's going to be put in the ground, what the, what our expectations are, and all of that, I think that all has to be added into the subdivision planning if, if it isn't there already. If it is there already, then we've got other issues. For example, when the actual house is tapped in on those sewer lines, we need to be called. When that sewer main was put down the road, we were, we should have been called to inspect it. It didn't happen. So, now we've got to deal with the fact that we've got 20, I think it's 2,100 feet, or 1,300, I think it's 1,300 feet of road. There's 1,300 feet of sewer main down that road, and laterals popped over to where the houses are going to be, and we have no idea what's there. We have no idea what's in the ground. And at some point, we're going to have to accept that into our system. As I said, when, when the developer was sitting in front of us, he could have put paper straws in the ground. We don't know. Now, obviously, that's not true, but are they bedded properly with the proper kind of materials? Is all kinds of different things that have to, are the incorporations, the, the joints and everything done properly so that 15, 20 years ago, from now on, please say I'm not going to be on the board still at that point. But the, the board that's there then inherits that problem. And we've, we see that, you see that on, on regular, too often, where an issue arises 15 years later, and well, who's responsible? We don't want to accept responsibility for something further down the road that's going to cost us a ton of money that could be fixed now and not be an issue. So, there's things like individual permits for individual pieces of property, when connections happen, inspections and when they should happen, progress, progress checks as things go on, who we should talk to. And one, one thing that we just initiated in our board, just voted on last week, if you get, one of the questions I have here is what happens when a subdivision has been approved and then is sold? What happens with that new owner? Do they know all the, do they know, do they have all the rules and everything in front of them? So, what we have done is that we have made our permits for tie-in for water and tie-in for sewer. You come in and you get a permit. It's good for a year. In a year, you've got to come and renew it. If you don't come and renew it, it expires. And this happened up there. It happens on occasion. And then, as you, for each successive renewal, you pay more, because if that permit is there, that means somebody else can't have it. And we, you know, and especially in water, we have to be concerned with management of water, Clean Water Management Act. But the, the permits are no longer transferable. So, if I come, if I get a whole bunch, get 18 permits, and then I take it and I sell it to you, those permits don't automatically transfer to you. You have to come back to our board, sit in front of us, we get to face-to-face, and we get to make sure that these are the rules. You need to use this kind of material, you need to do these kind of things, these things need to be inspected, that sort of thing. We just want to see if we can get all of that built into the subdivision process so that things like this doesn't, don't happen again.
If I may, and I certainly appreciate your input, and I'm sure we're all learning something here this evening, but with regards to the issue that applies to the Lyons Estate subdivision and the question with regards to that hydrant, if you will, that's been placed at 800 feet that you mentioned.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt you, but I just want to let you know, I did some heavy lifting on this one, too.
Yes, sir.
I think I can explain exactly how this failure occurred.
Okay.
Communication failure occurred. This is not a typical situation.
No, it's not.
So, if you don't mind.
Nope.
I want to go through this, okay? So, just real quick. So, we had a developer, Mr. Haynes, who wanted to develop that property quite a while ago, and because of market changes and whatnot, he, he didn't go forward with it. Then he came back to the planning board with essentially the same plan that he had back in like 2007, or somewhere around there. And he had explained that he had to, they had to change the whole plan to bring it up to the, to the new regulations, and that he had a new engineer. And he came before the board, and at the initial planning board meeting, because I actually went back and watched these meetings, as terrible as it is to see these things, they're boring as, well, I went back there and I looked.
You have a lot of spare time.
We're not always boring, please.
Mr. Haynes came before the planning board for a preliminary meeting. He didn't even have his engineer with him the first time he came up. But from that very first meeting, he talked about the intention of providing only one fire hydrant, and then shared, Dan Edmiston, at the time, he asked about if the fire chief was okay with this. And David replied, quote, "He said yes, as long as we locate it in the middle." So, I'm thinking to myself, way back when, they were already talking about moving this fire hydrant, and I'm thinking to myself, why, why didn't the sewer department know this at any point, looking at any plan? I'm going to get to that. I'm going to get to that. So, then, I'm looking at the plans, which I have a copy of, that were, attachment was emailed to us, and this is the plan that was presented to us. And this original plan dated October 6th, 2019, does not show the water line on the plan at all. It actually shows a hydrant located, not, not an existing hydrant, it says proposed hydrant, and it is way up near Lyons Road.
Just, just where the road's that widens out.
Exactly, exactly. It's way up there. And so, I'm thinking, oh, that's interesting, because they haven't moved it on this plan yet. I don't know how, but over time, as this plan continued to circulate, no one, no engineer of his, of Mr. Haynes's, fixed this. Then, the March 11th, 2020 meeting of the planning board, the engineer states, "We also submitted plans to the sewer department, and they reviewed the sewer plans." And then during the same meeting, the discussion about the one hydrant midway down came up again, and Truman Drive was mentioned. At, at one point in the meeting, again, the chair, Dan, discusses the waiver about the one hydrant. And again, Mr. Haynes states, he spoke to the chief, and he wanted the hydrant in the middle of the subdivision. At this point, town planner Bill Scanlon alerts Mr. Haynes' engineer that they need to fix the language, because the waiver on that plan that he was requesting actually describes a hydrant location as being at the intersection of Lyon and Truman Road.
Right.
Which means that the plan that the sewer department saw and signed off on, or didn't have a problem with, actually showed proposed hydrant location up where you guys want it, where it's not going to cause a problem.
Where we're not going to have 2,000 gallons of stale water.
So, the town engineer was present, and he stated that he recommends the plan not be endorsed until the plan is revised to show the actual location of the hydrant as requested by the fire chief. So, the funny thing is, if the plan had been revised way early on, when it was sent to the sewer department, you guys would have seen that they were planning on moving the hydrant down there, and you could have said then, whoa, you could have, before, one piece of pipe went in that ground, you guys could have stepped in and said, look, we got a real problem with this. I'm sure the chief would probably capitulate and say, well, you guys are the experts. If there's going to be a water pressure problem up there, you know, I'm, I'm not going to insist on that. So, I, I couldn't figure out, how the heck did this plan get approved, the definitive plan get approved, and none of us caught it? And then I went and looked and realized what had happened. That meeting that I just said, the
March 11th?
March 11th, 2020 meeting.
That's around when the property was sold.
Not only that, but you know what else happened then? That was the last planning board meeting where we had the full board here in person, where we could actually look at plans and sign plans in person. The very next meeting that I could find, according to the records, shows that we convened here with masks on, took a five-minute meeting where we basically just continued all public hearings and all business.
Yeah.
And then, we went to Zoom. And that didn't happen right away. And at some point during that time, when we weren't able to see the plans any longer, at some point, those plans were endorsed. The nearest thing I can figure is that it was a situation where the plans were down in the lobby, and we all had to come in one at a time and sign the Mylars and sign everything, and that. So, I actually do not know whether or not the current plan that we endorsed shows the fire hydrant midway down, or does it show it like this old one that they didn't correct? And does the waiver still talk about intersection of Lyons, of the location being at the intersection?
Last Tuesday, the developer came in and he had a whole roll of, of plans. We didn't open them up. We talked about, we hashed out everything, got, I think, we think we're all on the same page now. It's just that what we want to do now, as the steward, as, as the controlling bodies of, of all of this stuff for Dudley, is to improve our processes so that, so that we eliminate this. COVID happened, and it screwed up a whole lot of things.
What I'm trying to say is, I don't think the process was broken.
It may not have been.
And I think this was a very unusual situation where, like you said, because of the timing of the sale of the property and the engineer dropping the ball, the engineer on the developer's side, dropping the ball about making the correct changes that were supposed to be made. And then, after those changes had been made, this should have been reviewed by the other departments again. But what happened was, COVID hit, and all, and the town hall shut down.
Yep. Oh, yeah. I, I, I'm full aware. I lived through COVID meetings as well, and it's, we all did. And let's just pray that we never have to do it again.
So, I just wanted to get that out there, because I, I really wanted to understand how, how we could have missed this.
But
And I blame it on COVID.
And from my, from my standpoint, not just as, right now, the chairman, but as a commissioner, is, I don't know the subdivision process. All I know is that when we approve water and sewer, it's gone. We don't see it again until one of our full-time professionals is looking in a hole and looking at the pipe and the way it's bedded, what the, what kind of material is around it, what kind of pipe it is, everything is done properly. They're the, they're the professionals. They know all of the, all of the intricacies of what has to happen to make it acceptable. And they inspect it. That's the next time we see it. So, maybe, maybe the subdivision process is, is okay. I don't know what it is. I don't know what happens. What happens when a subdivision gets sold?
Well, in point of fact, I don't think the subdivision ever envisioned a pandemic.
No.
Nor did any of the processes that we have in place ever envision that kind of cataclysmic activity, if you will. So, and the timing, I think the Mr. Watroba's point, timing was bizarre in this case, in terms of the sequence.
What we want to do is just make sure that the, that what our standing rules are, and we're in the process, like you're going through your master plan.
I'll tell you another thing, Scott.
We're going through our rules.
I'll tell you another thing that, that alarms me. I wonder, I wonder what, what were the plans that people were looking at during the pre-construction meeting phase?
I, yeah, I don't know.
When representatives from the water and sewer were there, I have to, I have, the only thing I can assume is that it was this plan that shows the hydrant location up near Lyons Road. Because otherwise, why wouldn't the representative from the sewer department say, oh, wait a minute, I'm looking at a, I'm looking at a fire hydrant halfway down?
The sewer, the sewer department, though we're one board, we still have a water department and a sewer department. If the sewer guys are looking at it, they're looking at sewer lines.
Yeah.
They're not concerning themselves with the water mains. They're not concerning themselves with streetlights. They're not concerning with curbs. They're not concerning with any of that stuff. They're looking at the sewer lines. They're going to go down like this, they're going to be, we want this and this and this.
Yeah, and I honestly can't remember the, because I mean, when I saw the, when I saw the discussion about the pre-construction meeting, they actually named the individual from the sewer department was there, and you'll have to forgive me, because I don't remember.
They would have been Micro Tim.
I don't, I don't remember.
They're the, they're the two, two people that are the experts.
Maybe that, that was it. But the, the problem before us right now, as a board, the way I see it, is the easy fix here is, so-called easy fix would be that we amend, we make a minor change to the Lyons Estates subdivision plans, and rescind, or I guess, rescind, would that be?
Amend.
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 Amend the requirement for a fire hydrant location halfway down Truman Drive. My only problem with that is, I don't know, what does the plan show?
What his, his, his plan shows, 800 feet down. He's got 800 feet of pipe already in the ground.
But by your own admission, you guys didn't unroll the plans and look at it. Did you look at that?
His Mylar, yeah, his.
Is he, is he showing you the plan that was signed by the full board?
Yes, yes. That plan, signed by the board, has the water main on it, 800 feet down.
Signed by which board?
So, that's why he, because he had an endorsed plan from the planning board that shows that water main.
Okay. All right. Then I think we're okay with moving forward and with amending it.
All right. Okay. And, and I guess, as, as was said before, just open up the, the channels to, to have some, some, some working meetings to try to hammer out, because we're in the process of updating our rules as well.
Yeah.
There are, we just voted on, on a few, on a couple of them this past week. And so, we want to make sure that those, as they get updated and published, that, and, and I'll be honest, hopefully my wife doesn't watch this, yeah, I, I wouldn't mind understanding a little bit more about what subdivision, what the subdivision rules are. Yeah, we've been hearing about them for years. And I, you know, I don't know them. I, because that's not my, that's not my thing.
And Mr. Chairman, just to clarify my concern about, I want to make sure that that plan that we signed actually shows that line exists, is because you're actually, you're absolutely right, Scott. We're not going to be here 50 years from now. But what I don't want is
Mr. Shinaki is rather young.
I don't want somebody to start digging up that road and have, be a total surprise that there's an entire line that was unused underneath there that they're going to run into, because there's a plan down there that says that, no, no, there's no water line, it's just a hydrant.
We've, we've got that same thing. We've got a, we've got a sewer pit on Eisenhower Drive. We own it. We, we never voted to put it in there, but we own it.
I will take the town, I will take the town planner, have his word. And if he says that he saw that the plan that we signed, and the Mylars that we signed, doesn't, does show the water line going halfway down. doesn't, does show the water line going halfway down with hydrant down at the end, and that is what exists there, then we'll just amend it.
And, and we just want to make it, you know, as, as we, as we try to move to more digital and, and making things easier for developers and for home builders and that sort of thing, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. That's all. And I think that's, that's all, that's what my board wants as well.
Thank you. Mr. Page.
To, to Mr. Scanlon, is there a way to maybe generate a, a sign-off sheet from the different departments that a developer could get sign-offs from fire chief, sewer commission, water commission?
Conservation.
Conservation.
We used to have one.
Right down where, where they would have to produce that to the planning board, you know, to get final approval. That way there, we know everybody has seen everything, there's no questions, and everybody's on the same page.
But what happens is, something like this happens, changes, a change in the main happens as it, as it is, what, three years later, four years later, when the plans get reopened and they, the guy starts to move, the developer starts to move forward again, he makes a change. Well, that change has to cycle, has to filter all the way back up. If it doesn't, then, then we end up with the disconnect. And whatever happened, and I'm sure that 95% of it is, is the fact that we were doing it all through our computer screens.
Well, that.
It just, it just, that makes it, makes it difficult.
Excuse me, I appreciate your thought, Bill. And just a question now, that the last Board of Selectmen's meeting mentioned was made of e-permitting.
Right.
Which I assume might allow us some opportunity in terms of making sure everybody was fully connected and involved. I'm not sure of the mechanics of that by own, by no means, but I know that there is work being done on that, and perhaps we could look into seeing whether that would allow for this process to flow more readily than it maybe has been.
All the town administrator is working.
Right.
On, amongst other things, on getting e-permitting going.
Right. It sounded, I, I may be jumping the gun a bit, but it sounded like it was underway, and I think even a mention of a month in July.
That's the latest issue too, is that it should be going live in a month or so.
Right. And does it lend itself to streamlining some of the processes and some of the issues that we're talking about?
I hope so, I don't know for sure.
Hopefully, okay, well, that's certainly something for us to keep an eye on.
Can we get to that?
All right.
The, the, the regulation that says that you must have the sign-off sheet would then have to be wiped out so that it goes into the e-permit. See, everything is going to have to be modernized.
Right, right. And you may end up with something that's a dual system until you've proven the.
Till, till everything's true, yes.
Electronic processes, correct. Thank you, Mr. Wetroba, for having dug in again, our board archaeologist. We don't have that title in far as.
A very boring life.
Well, hopefully you don't buy a TV anytime soon because I don't know where your time will go, but you've added some enlightenment. And it was, I think for us then, there is, it's the board's pleasure, I think we need to do a little bit of housekeeping here in terms of a motion.
Make a motion, Steve? Sure. So, I'd like, let me just think for a second here how I want to word this. Oh, heck, we'll just, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the Lyons Estates subdivision to not require the installation of a hydrant at the location currently shown on the plan at approximately the midpoint of Truman Drive.
And to cap the water main that's in place.
And to remove the hydrant, the gate valve, and cap the line.
The line's not connected, so it's just, it's not even connected to the main yet.
But we want to cap it, right? We don't want dirt going in there, just in case down the road, something happens, you guys find a water pressure.
Right.
Thank you. Motion made, and second?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. So, just to make it clear, so he will not be required to put the hydrant where it was initially proposed at the beginning of the road?
I thought there was a hydrant across the street.
There's one across the street.
There's one across the street, and we, we had wanted the one across the road, simply, simply to avoid closing Lyons Road if, if for some reason the fire department has to run something down the road.
So, it's.
But if it's, if it's there, it's there. If it's not, we can, the town can, everybody can deal with it. A fire only lasts a few hours.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear to Mr. Ravain, the developer, that he is not going to be required at all to put a hydrant on that road. It's going to be the one that is present across the street, and that's.
Yes, yeah, and there won't be any reason to open Lyons Road up. That's, that's the way it was left.
If I may, I did see the video of your meeting with Mr. Ravain, and I think he was clear on that point.
Right.
If I understood it, what I saw.
So, he's, he's going to save, he's going to save, he spent a bunch of money on pipe, but he's going to save a little bit on the fact that he now does not have to do a road opening.
All right, so we have a motion. Did we have a second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, we have 244 in favor and one abstention.
Okay, and we'll look forward to.
Yes.
Further communications and, and getting, making sure everything is, we're all on the same page, because it just makes it easier.
Not only for us to be on the same page, but for the people that are out there in terms of the residents of the town, to make sure that they understand that page.
Makes it easier for the public to be able to do their business.
Thank you very much for your time.
Should be easier now that the Zoom meetings are over too.
Yes. Like I said, hopefully we don't go back.
Oh, God, please cross your fingers.
Yeah, because if that plan had come back before the board, before the next board meeting, if we were all here in person and looking at that plan again, I'm sure one of us would have said, oh, gee, you know, maybe that's not.
Yeah, the world just went a little tilt there for a while.
It did.
Definitely did. Okay, I'm trying to get back then to where we are in terms of our agenda. Do we are number five on that, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, that would be review draft decision for Fish Road preliminary plan.
You have that in tab D. I sent that to you.
Yes. Yeah, we have that. I guess I would ask us what the board's pleasure might be on that. I believe we have some folks here who may be living in the area who will be looking to make comment, maybe a little presumptuous on that, but we'll see. Board have any comments they'd care to make with regards to what is presented this evening? Yes, Mr. Horn.
On section five sidewalks. It's on page four. I thought at the last meeting that the developer showed a plan with sidewalks in the cul-de-sac.
He did. So, that, that was his initial request, and then he modified it under, on page five and six, we have the actual waivers that he, shown on the revised plan, and it notes that waiver five was withdrawn because he did put in sidewalks. Five, six, and seven were withdrawn. It was down from the final four, which.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. What was it, seven originally?
Seven original.
Seven altogether, right. So, and he removed three by coming into compliance with the subdivision regulations.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My, my thought is, what does this do to the applicant's, the situation regarding the applicant's gracious offer to construct a sidewalk where it would be more beneficial to the residents of Fish Road from, from the gravel driveway going into the current operating gravel pit down to the, the entry of Fish Road? Where do we stand with that?
So, we're hoping to set up a meeting with the applicant, the highway superintendent, and the fire chief, and myself, and town administrator, to discuss that from the town's perspective, whether that's a good idea or not. So, if.
I guess my question, Bill, is, is your understanding that the applicant, in lieu of still, in lieu of him now being required to construct the sidewalks in the cul-de-sac, is he still willing to move forward?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so he's still, has he provided a letter to the town, or is he?
Well, he needs town approval.
I understand.
Because it's a public way. So, the town needs to decide whether, you know, we want the sidewalk there, and if so, he would be willing to do it.
I guess, if I may, Mr. Wetroba, you're asking, is there anything in terms of the mechanics for this to go forward and it works? Has any letter been addressed to the Board of Selectmen, for example?
No.
So, it's still in the talking stages, or it's still in the planning stages?
And it really doesn't affect the planning board because that portion of Fish Road is a public way.
Right.
Yeah, I understand that.
And they're real commissioners.
And there's no quid pro quo, and yet somehow, things get done so that, you know, everybody's happy, or as many of us can be happy, get something out of it. A playground gets a donation because an open space waiver. A sidewalk is built on a public road because a sidewalk waiver.
Well, no, he, I think, offered to build a sidewalk because he wanted to be helpful to the residents on the street, and he thought that would be beneficial.
The whole discussion came up, as I recall, because we had a, a person who lives on the street came here and expressed a very genuine concern about the safety of her children.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, not to put words in her mouth, but I think it was more about like, the hell with the sidewalks down on the cul-de-sac where nobody's going to be because it's going to be an industrial lot. How about sidewalks over here where these trucks are coming by and my kids have to walk to the bus stop? So.
Right, I mean, he's offered to put the sidewalk in, he could withdraw that offer if he likes to, if he wants to. But as, I understand that at the moment, he's still willing to do it.
Yeah, and essentially, we don't have the ammunition anymore because they basically said they're going to put the sidewalks in.
Right, well, ammunition, okay. But Mr. Horn did have.
Bargaining chip, however you want.
Something to that effect, I suppose, a little, little less hostile, I suppose. Mr. Horn had a, had a point he wanted to make.
My question was to Bill, if you, if you knew, like, was the developer willing to do both? Was it one or the other, or was he willing to do both? Put the sidewalks on the cul-de-sac and?
Well, you know, I think he kind of misread the room at the first meeting, and when he came back with the revised plan, he had the sidewalks on the extension. And it was my sense that the board wasn't really going to require him to do that, but he felt that it would be in his own best interest to do that.
Some of the board wanted.
So, it was his choice to withdraw the waiver and to put the sidewalks in the extension.
And that's exactly what you're documenting here.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Any further comment from the board, or do we want to open this up? I suspect there may be some folks here who would like to speak to this issue. Is that appropriate at this time, Bill?
At your discretion, sure.
All right, is there anyone who cares to make comment in regards to where we stand now? This, again, is the preliminary plan. We still have the definitive plan ahead of us, but I think the sense of the board, and I'm probably not reading the room entirely correctly, is that I don't think we have issues with this as it stands now. We did approve or did vote to accept it last time, essentially as it is today. Anyone? Yes, ma'am. Do we have, we have sign-in sheet over there?
Yes.
Would you please?
We signed in the other room.
Oh, okay, that's right. You were with us, you've been with us for the duration, thank you.
You've been with me the whole time. I'm Elin, I at 36 Fish Road, and almost exactly what I said.
He gets it right 90% of the time.
I don't know if I quite used that exact language, but it was pretty much correct. Yeah, so along with the sidewalk, my question for you guys, is it in the plan to widen that part of Fish Road? Because I kind of wish the representatives from Ramco were here because twice this week, I've been almost run off the road, plowed into. I'm curious if stop signs are going to be put at the end of West Dudley and Fish and at the end of their road. Their trucks come flying out, have no regard. So, yes, a sidewalk will help, but if the, if the road's not being widened down there, then the sidewalk's going to kind of shrink it a little bit unless I'm completely inaccurate there.
Mr. Wetroba.
Have you spoken to the police department about the situation down there with the trucks? Because I remember the day we were leaving there, there was a big 18-wheeler, and we were trying to drive out of there. He just stopped on the bridge going out on Paper Mill Road. He, he stopped, he didn't put his flashes or anything on, he just, I don't know what the hell he was doing. And we were stuck behind him, and it was, it was, the applicant was in the vehicle in front of me, and he was stuck behind.
Right, right.
I have been, over the course of the last couple of years, been in contact, my first course of action, because I had no idea how to get in touch with the Ramco, so I actually talked to the chief of police, who then talked to Jonathan, and, you know, he dealt with at that time, and then he told me in the future to deal with Jonathan myself. Well, I've had to contact them numerous times. It's literally, it's a safety concern. So, I'm hoping that it's in the plan that that bottom of the road is also going to be widened because there's, you've said yourself, you've been down there. Like, I had, I had bushes coming in my car to just try to get to the grocery store. I mean, it's, it's an issue. So, I'm happy to hear that it's still in the plan that they want to put the sidewalk at the end at any point, because can they withdraw that? Can they, can they renig on that and go back?
Well, as I think I mentioned, this is still a preliminary plan. We have a definitive plan, which is, which more will lock things in, so to speak. So, you may want to be in attendance when we get to the point where that's not discussed.
I plan on being in every meeting possible.
Okay, I.
You're going to know us very well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To answer her question though more directly, I believe Mr. Scanlon just said that he could withdraw that offer to put those sidewalks in at any time.
He, Mr. Andrew Leavitt seems to have been in the conversation that we've had, obviously during the meetings that we've been part of, and we did meet with him separately on one occasion. Seems to be at least receptive in terms of thoughts and ideas that are presented to him, and I think would deal responsibly with this situation. I don't know if it's, you mentioned the driving habits of the drivers, it seems like something that could be easily remedied if they are, in fact, are working for Ramco.
Well, it's, it's their trucks and it's their contractors. They have contracted trucks that come in all the time too, which Jonathan at first told me, I should be contacting contractors, and I said, no, 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 no. They're under your business, they're your responsibility, I shouldn't be contacting the world.
They also have a lot of trucks coming in from other companies.
Yeah, that's what she's.
That's what I'm saying, the contractors. But that should, that's on Jonathan to have to deal with them, not us.
Well, he has, he, I think we probably have more leverage dealing with them as, as there's a commercial relationship there with you perhaps. At some point, it might be an issue in terms of enforcement.
Well, yeah, my next stop, I will contact Jonathan once again, and if I'm not seeing an improvement, I am going to, I am going to the chief. Because I'm tired of having our safety, like, disregarded. Now, obviously, it's not Jonathan or Dick, it's the drivers, but it's still, if that road stays there, and the sidewalks are a great help, but it's not a help for those of us that are driving to and from, that live there. So, that's just, you know, food for thought to kind of, you know.
Yeah, certainly. You know, safety is a concern. I've heard any number of times in Board of Selectmen's meeting that's top priority. And certainly, I think we are all in agreement that that should come at the top of anyone's list. I can't offer you any relief right now. You obviously have some avenues of pursuit here in terms of going to the police, talking to Jonathan, maybe suggesting to him that as the person who has a relationship with these contractors, he has perhaps more influence than you as a member of the public, and try to address it that way. Yeah, as a general rule, I think all of us kind of lost sight of what it meant to drive during the pandemic. I've seen a lot of crazy things going on on the road.
I can't disagree.
I don't know whether driver's education is still part of the curriculum in some of the schools, but if it isn't, it might be time to bring it back. As far as the widening of the road is concerned, I think that's something you have to address with the Board of Selectmen, the other highway commissioners in town, as I believe.
I will bring that up when we have that meeting.
I would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Do your school buses go down that road?
No, because it's a dead end. There's nowhere for them to turn around. And honestly, even going up when the cul-de-sac is built, they're the only two kids on the road, and so you're talking about coming all the way up, because we're all the way up. We're the second to the last house. You're talking about additional gas, mileages on the buses, like, probably tacking on a You're talking about additional gas, mileages on the buses, like, probably tacking on a good seven, eight minutes to their actual trips to and from. Like, it's better off leaving the bus stop at the bottom of the road, quite frankly.
They wouldn't do it, even with the cul-de-sac.
Oh, I know. It's... You know, it sounds silly, but wear and tear on the buses, the gas, just everything, like, it's better off having to stop and ensuring the safety along the rest of the road, because we had that conversation in the neighborhood meeting. One of our neighbors brought it up, and she's like, well, what about this? And I said, mm, we'd probably be better off with them not coming up here.
Yeah.
Like, the trash trucks have to, they come up, and they back all the way down that road, because they can't turn around. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Is anyone else eager to address this this evening?
Good evening. Paul Lyons, Fish Road. What you spoke of on this latest presentation, I understand they withdrew the sidewalk. Did I... Was this publicized on the website anywhere? What was submitted, what you're looking at right now?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, they didn't withdraw the sidewalk. They withdrew their request to waive the requirement for sidewalk. They actually now are saying they're gonna build the sidewalk.
Okay.
So, they actually took off three things that they didn't want to do, that they asked us to waive the requirement for. They have now come back and said, we're now gonna do these three things, so we don't have to ask you for permission to not do it.
The documents you're looking at right now, was that somewhere on the website?
No.
Okay. So, how can the public access what they presented to you in documents? Because we can't speak on that if we haven't seen it, and we don't know what you're specifically addressing there that we might have questions about.
Well, the... At the last meeting, the board approved the plan as presented, as Steve mentioned, with the three waiver requests withdrawn. So, this is just a preliminary plan decision that writes up the status of the plan and what the board is actually approving. So, it's already approved it, it's just writing it down on paper.
But, Mr. Wetruba just said that it's changed.
But, no, it hasn't changed since the last meeting.
Hasn't changed. It hasn't changed since the last meeting.
At the last meeting, he had the plan with the sidewalks, the street trees, and the light. So, he had presented that at the last meeting.
Okay.
I thought you were here at the last meeting.
I was.
You were.
So, that's... All right. So, there... What... The documents you're looking at has no changes whatsoever from the last meeting.
Correct.
Okay, technically, it's just...
The changes I was talking about were from the meeting before that, when it first came before us, getting voiced your concern. And we were talking about that they were saying, why build the sidewalks? Because it's not... I don't know where... You probably remember that whole...
Right.
Oh, that was one of my...
Again, there is another step in the process. There is the definitive plan.
Right. And is there a timeframe on that, or you will cross that bridge when they get around to presenting it?
Right, there's no deadline. He can come in whenever he's ready for that definitive plan.
Okay. Will there be... In other words, if he drops it off three days before your next meeting, at that time, will you take it up at that meeting?
No.
Or will you give a lead time, say, oh, no, we're gonna wait two weeks or a month?
Right, there's actually... It's a more formal process than the preliminary plan. Does require a public hearing, notice to a butters.
Okay.
So, you'll be notified if you're within 300 feet of the subdivision, which you may not be, but I'm sure you would find out from others.
But, is it like in other cases where there has to be 30 days' notice?
There is a requirement to publish the notice at least 14 days before the hearing.
Okay.
That would be in the press, the local press, the Webster Times. Webster Telegram and Webster Times, isn't it? Both? No, just Webster Telegram. Okay.
Those boring legal sections that...
But, they still have to notify their butters.
Yes.
Let's see if there's anything else that may come up. Again, I haven't checked this week, but at the moment, as far as I know, there's still no proof of purchase on the dirt road going down to what I call the gravel pits.
Excuse me, Mr.... Through the chair, Mr. Lyons, if you don't mind me asking, where are you checking for that?
Assessor's office.
No, you need to check the registry of deeds.
Well, actually, they do that for me. Either if I stop by, and she says, hold on, wait a minute, let me check to see if anything's come through, and she calls it up to make sure I'm not missing anything. I've checked the registry of deeds, I've seen that sadly someone passed away, and it's now just one owner. And that was May 7th, it was... The paperwork was put in, and May 11th, it was recorded. And that's the only, as of, and I can't say for this week, but previously, that's the only change of ownership with that property. That's... And I know it's recorded, but we will... I will keep checking. If the sale goes through, can the planning board make a stipulation that that dirt road has to be at least paved at the top? Is that beyond your power?
That's outside the...
It's a private road, I believe.
Okay.
I believe that to be a private road. Isn't that the case, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, so that means you can't require a stop sign there? You can't require anything?
So, the planning board jurisdiction only extends to that 450-foot extension of the road.
That would be something you would want to take up with Highway Department?
Okay.
Or even the police chief or something.
Which I don't even know if they can enforce it, because it's a private drive.
The other opportunity is when they commit for a special permit for the marijuana facility. Then there'll be a traffic study performed, and at that point, the planning board has the ability and the authority to require traffic mitigation measures.
Because what happens now, in the summertime, the ground's not frozen, they put down a layer of gravel, fairly good-sized stone, in my opinion. And as those trucks come up, it ends up on Fish... A lot of those stones end up on Fish Road. And they get kicked over onto my driveway, their lead, just not a big section of Fish Road, but you have... And I go down there in the summertime, I sweep them off, and that's why I asked about paving that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Wetruba.
Have you or any of the other residents tried approaching Jonathan Andrew Levitch about changing that road surface, maybe just even if it was just the first 100 feet? So that when the trucks are coming out, any gravel that is stuck in the treads of the truck, maybe if it was hitting a paved road, or even a bind... What's that, asphalt millings? You know, something along that lines? Something more solid? And they could be throwing the rocks off before they get out onto the main road, because I could see where you'd... That would be an issue, if you got all those little rocks all over the road, you know?
An annoyance, at least, yes. But, the suggestion, again, is that maybe you approach them and see if there's something that could be done.
Yeah, because unfortunately, that's not something we can require of them. Even this, like, the idea of construction of the sidewalk down to the bus stop, that's, you know, that's a request we could make, if they're open to it, but it's really, it's more about him offering it, which he has. But, he could rescind that offer?
I would put forth that, and I could be wrong, if the sale of the gravel road goes through, and if, I know it's a big if, he presents that as part of his... The next phase, I'm sorry, what do you...
Definitive plan.
Definitive plan for a second access road, doesn't that now come under your power? Because now it's part of the plan.
True, but I don't see any reason why that would even be showing on a definitive plan, because it's not even... It's not on there now.
He's not subdividing, in other words. At that point, he's only subdividing by the cul-de-sac. So, that's why he needed to prepare a definitive plan.
I think what... Mr. Chairman, I think what Mr. Lyons is thinking of is he's thinking of the discussion about the access to the marijuana facility operation being through, and that's gonna be the special permit process for that marijuana facility. That's where all that will come into play. But, right now, once again, we're only dealing with the subdivision of that parcel, which doesn't even include where that gravel road is.
Okay. I'll wait and see what the definitive plan shows, and I thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing your interest to our board. Is someone else in the background?
Your TV must be broken, too.
Come on up.
I actually just have a question, because we have an expert water person here today. So, I just have...
Could you sign in, please?
Yes, I did.
You did, all right. Thank you.
I was just wondering, is that gonna be... I'm sorry, it's Laura Tonelli, 33 Fish Road. I'm just wondering if the water is gonna be looked at, or is that gonna be part of the definitive plan?
No.
No.
That will be part of the marijuana special permit application.
Oh, that'll be part of the application?
He's going to drill a well to services cultivation facility.
He already has... There is a well there.
Okay.
Yes.
There's a well there already, so...
So, the planning board can require a study to determine what the impact of that withdrawal will be on the neighborhood wells?
Exactly. That's so... Which... So, where do I have to be to... Where and when? Because I'm gonna be there.
When he applies for a special permit.
So, it's when he applies for the permit?
As I recall, your well was, what, 450 feet or something deep?
Correct. Yep. And I'm way up on the hill, and...
Right. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wetruba, you, I think, were there when it was mentioned, there is a well on the property now.
I believe so.
And as I understood it, there was to be a second well. I don't think they were gonna use that well going forward.
I don't recall the discussion about the second well, Mr. Scanlon just... No, I... Okay. So, I don't remember the second well. I do remember him saying that the water supply that that well, that existing well had, that it was...
More than sufficient, as he understood it.
Right, of course, we would have a...
Right. But, I thought I recalled that from when we visited the site, and I thought mention was made of another well.
At the site, when I was there, I heard... The numbers that I heard was something to the effect that they would need 5,000 gallons of water a day for the...
Grow facility?
Greenhouse, right. And that the current well that was on-site was able to produce 14,000 gallons a day, or something to that effect. So, it was more... It was almost triple of what they needed per day on the current well.
That may need clarification. I thought he was thinking about another well, but I'm not sure. But, in any event, we understand your concern. Obviously, at the depth you are, you don't want to turn a tap and then find nothing's coming.
And for Mr. Horn's benefit, I was discussing at the last meeting how I use 100 gallons a day, and so, within two days... I'm sorry. What's that?
Mr. Wetruba, that's out of order.
So, within about 100, I would say, it's on my filter. This is how I know. I have two water filters. And because of... Okay, so, within 300 and whatever it is a year, 365 days, I'm gonna use what they would use in two days. So, I just would like to know how that's gonna affect the, you know, my water.
Valid question.
Very concerned about that. And we haven't seen... I mean, he says that that's what there is, or that's what the well produces, or whatever, but, I mean, over a period of time, how is that going to affect it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Wetruba.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Scanlon, but we can actually require our own expert to go up there, test that well, and see what kind of... In other words, we can require a study, correct? As to how much water is reserved under there?
Yes, we could require the applicant to perform a study, and then we could have that peer reviewed if he wanted to.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I think that might be in order.
You know, if anybody wanted to not take his word for it, could do that. I will say this, even if the water's not there, they will truck it in, probably.
Well, I would rather see them truck it in and not take it out of the well.
Wait a minute, we're trying to keep that traffic...
I don't care. They can go down the dirt road and truck it in. Go down their dirt road and truck it in.
But, I believe that's what the people said, that if there was any problem with that putting too much of a burden on the town's water system, that they would truck in their own water. That's how much money is in this stuff.
I get it, and it's great. It's a great thing. But, if I can't sell my house someday because there's no water, that's a bad thing.
I agree.
It's a very bad thing.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think the issue, then, is to provide the residents with some assurance that...
We're gonna have to make sure that the water is ample, and if it's not, then if they want to continue to go forward, then they're gonna have to bring in their own water.
Blame B.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one more question, please?
Yes, sir.
With that subject in mind, we were told back in April that they were doing on Saturday, they were doing a water study. They were pumping the existing well. Some company that they employed was coming in, and they were gonna pump it, get all the numbers. Will that test be submitted to you?
I assume so.
Well, we can certainly raise the question and see what they have...
That's what the neighborhood homeowners were told.
Okay. Well...
They definitely were doing a study, they had a company coming in, and they were gonna do a water study, and we haven't heard anything about the results from it officially, so...
I mean, it's a smart thing for them to do, because they need a water supply in order to, you know, grow the crop, and it has to be clean water as well, so...
Okay. I just thought maybe you could request and see what this study says.
All right.
Thank you.
I think sufficient need for us to carry that thought forward. Thank you. Thank you all. Anyone else? Going, going, going. One, two, three? Gone. Okay. All right. Now, back to where we were on the agenda. I kind of lost track. We've been back and forth, in and out of the room, and up and down the...
I think we're up to Legacy Landing.
Are we? Okay. Then I get to accuse myself, I guess, again, at this point. I'm just gonna sit here and be quiet, if that's okay.
You should go sit down.
I got what you wanna get, so.
Steve, do you wanna take over as chair since you're the acting officer?
Where's he going?
I have to. He has to be accused.
Legacy Landing.
Goodnight, folks.
He's in the bottom.
He's a neighbor.
I'm not gonna sit in the big chair.
Okay.
Alright, let me get back to the agenda. Actually, Bill, I was just gonna ask, we just jumped forward to Legacy Landing.
Yes.
Is there any action that needs to be taken with this peer review that we just?
At the last meeting, you may recall, that.
Don't count on that.
That Mr. Heinz proposed a former security for the subdivision, which included a twenty-five.
No, no, I'm sorry, Bill, I meant what we were just discussing.
Fish Road.
Oh, okay, oh, yes, I, good point, I do need an approval of this decision tonight, or you could wait until the following meeting, but I do need your approval for me to sign this decision.
Right, basically, approve, approval of this.
Oh, let me come back in here.
Yeah, come on back.
Alright, so someone.
Okay, someone, what is the board's pleasure, someone here to make a motion?
I'd happy to make any changes, if you'd like, then we could vote it as amended, or you want more time to study it?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty much what we, we all discussed, we all discussed waivers back and forth, and I think I made it pretty clear how I look on some of the waivers, and then the way we left it was that we said, okay, that just because this, we're talking about this now, doesn't mean that we can't have further discussion, further changes happen during the definitive.
Correct.
And to that point, I think we've heard evidence this evening that there are some lingering concerns and some questions that are still open-ended.
Right, but many of those concerns and everything actually belong more in the special permit process for the marijuana facility, actually.
Right.
Those are the biggest concerns, right, the water.
Sure.
Traffic study, all of that, that's all, that all comes later, as far as this subdivision goes, it's really just a matter of.
Hey, as Mr. Angelovich indicated, he could not even proceed with the subdivision if he wants to come in from a different direction. He, he said he bought another lot that has sufficient furniture, so he can get his two lots without having to subdivide now, so he may not even come back for his definitive plan. So the reason he, he presented this plan is to create a second lot, but he's since bought another property.
Says you.
So, says he.
Yeah.
And he, he was clear that he didn't even have to do the subdivision.
Yes, I believe it was something along the lines of a lot of the goodness of his heart, he's doing this for the, for the highway department and the fire department, to be able to turn around their snowplows, and their fire trucks, and put a cistern in, and all of that.
Correct.
What you're saying now is, he could just say, I don't need to do that now, the hell with the whole subdivision idea, because I've got this other parcel.
Oh, gentlemen, I would suggest that we deal with what we have, as opposed to what people might do, that, that's a, that's a road that goes nowhere.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion at this time that we accept the, that we, accept the certificate of approval as written by the town planner for Fish Road Extension Preliminary Subdivision Plan?
Second?
Motion made and seconded and discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. Abstained, one abstention, and Mr. Shneke, did you vote?
I'd rather abstain.
You'd rather abstain, okay, so we have a, we have three, three in favor, that is sufficient to carry the motion.
Yes, we need to re-vote, correct.
Okay, now, relocate now?
Yes.
Okay.
Miss you already.
Ah, I know you don't.
Wow.
Mr. Clark?
I appreciate your perseverance. Night owl. And, and we're at the same table again.
Yes, yes, and we'll be neighbors soon.
We're gonna be neighbors, you're gonna move in? No?
I'm gonna move in, I'm not staying.
Are you still building a single residence for the rooms? At what point did we talk about it?
No, we haven't really talked about that yet.
Single separate.
It's a possibility, but it's something that we haven't talked about yet.
Okay, so, moving along in the agenda, we're at inspections and actions associated with site plans, legacy landing, opinion of town council relative to proposed security. So, Bill, where are we with that, last time we talked, we talked about that the town council did not like the idea of the security as presented by the applicant, and actually recommended that the applicant, that you reach out to the applicant, and talk about coming up with another idea, so do we have another idea?
That's why Mr. Heinz is here tonight.
Oh, that's a good reason.
So I, I think some of the reasons as, as a town council, oh, excuse me, good evening, board members, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can we move them along again? Oh, excuse me. Thank you, sir.
I got your miracle leaves at home.
Yeah.
So, having read town council's thoughts on the situation, I, I, I'm gonna propose a couple of things, and, you know, see what the board thinks. First of all, the reason why I, I offered the twenty-five thousand dollar cash deposit for each permit that would be issued, was to give the, the town cash security, so that they wouldn't have to turn, you know, go to a bond company. And, and that was the, that was the reason, just to give the, the town, you know, a feeling of security here, that if there was an issue, that the town wouldn't get stuck in any way. And the, the other thing that I made reference to was also, I would not be asking for certificates of occupancy, under any conditions, until a subdivision was completely in the state that it had to be in, with at least a binder coat down, before I asked for a certificate of occupancy. And then there comes, the, the town council mentioned several times, security for a subdivision, this is not a subdivision, it's a, a private community, which will have an HOA, that will cover all the costs, so the town will have no costs after the subdivision is completed. So there, there's no infrastructure, so, and, and, and other communities that have built, that are very similar to this community, as, as we mentioned the last time, in Shoesbury, there is no security in Shoesbury. It's a private road, it, it's actually a driveway, it's not a road, and this is a driveway also. So, and I'm not, and I talked to Bill a couple of days ago, and I'm not opposed to securing the road, so whatever we don't finish, up till, till, to pavement, I will be, I have to do a fifty-three G account, right, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, I wouldn't be opposed to have Graves Engineering come out and do an estimate for completion, and then bond that, that amount. And my thought was, was if town council is uncomfortable with this cash deposit, we could also come up with a number that I could also bond my proposal here.
Excuse me.
Sure.
This is coming back to me now, I remember from the last meeting, when we got town council's opinion on this, that when we were reading the opinion, when I read the opinion anyways, it almost seemed to me like we asked the wrong question, or they didn't understand, that the town council didn't understand the question.
Correct.
They were talking about, you know, money to complete the roads, if the developer pulls out and everything, and we're talking about essentially a private road, because of the, it's a condo. So, I think the first problem is, we got a bad answer from council, because we.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
No?
I think you got a good answer. The decision says that you are treating this as a subdivision, that you need, the developer needs to conform to the subdivision rules and regulations in building the road, and your regulations require a financial security to make sure they have sufficient funds on hand to complete the road, should the project not move forward. So, the twenty-five thousand dollar per lot proposal, council deemed not sufficient, because it might not cover the cost of completing the road, should something happen. So, council's opinion was that you should proceed, as if this was a subdivision, and require an estimate of the cost for completing the road.
And then he bonds.
And then he comes in with a security for that amount.
But what about the houses?
Um, well.
Still do the twenty-five thousand dollars per house on top of that?
He wouldn't need to, no.
No, he wouldn't need to, so, it would be a bond, or a tri-party agreement, or some other arrangement.
But, however, the whole point of the twenty-five thousand dollars per house was to do it of half of a, a half, an incomplete house, and restore that lot back to, had nothing to do with the roads, so.
And, and that pre, that pre, that, excuse me, Bill, but that predates the roads, because by the time we get to the completion of the road, where it would be acceptable to issue occupancy permits, I wanna have five, or six, or seven houses in the ground and up and built. So if we deal with that, if we deal with this, this, the, the bonding, when I'm finished the infrastructure, which, you know, will go through the subdivision process, and post a bond. What I was trying to do is let the town know, or, or give the town security to, to feel okay enough to issue me occupancy, I mean, building permits, to get some houses underway. So this is what I also could propose, I can say to the board right now, and I'm sure other developers have said this, but I'll, I'll back it up. I'll have my bank submit a letter to the town to say that no matter what the, the, the condition of the economy is, and this project is not going to fail. I'm not gonna get foreclosed on. So, they'll, they'll, and we've done this before, where we've proven an amount of funds in the bank, so that no matter what happens, this project isn't gonna go upside down.
So I, I think what you're talking about is either a tri-party agreement, or a letter of credit from the bank, which would be acceptable security.
Okay, Mr. Horn, I believe you had something you wanted to add.
I, I was, uh, Mr., thanks, Mr. Wetrova, through, through the acting chair, and when I was reading, I, I was under the same opinion, Bill, when I was reading this, this town council opinion, especially where it says here, "Should the developer suddenly depart from the project before completing the construction of the roadway and the installation of municipal services therein, the town may be confronted with residents who have purchased finished homes, but are left with unfinished road and/or incomplete installation of municipal services, and the surety proposed by the developer would not likely be sufficient to complete the work." His twenty-five thousand dollars isn't to do any of this, his twenty-five thousand dollars is to, he's gonna, he's gonna go into a field and build four, five, six houses, whatever he wants, twenty-five thousand dollars apiece, he may not even touch the road, you know, and then if at the end, something does happen, and he walks away, that twenty-five thousand dollars cash that the town's holding is enough to tear down those three, four, or five, six houses, and put it back to the field the way it was.
Not if he sold the houses, though.
How can he sell the houses? He can't sell the houses legally.
No certificate of occupancy.
No power.
Well, he's got a buyer for those houses, though, he's not gonna build them without a buyer.
He'll take deposits, but that doesn't mean he closes on them.
So you still have the problem, as council points out, that you've got an unfinished road, that isn't serving, that can't serve the, the development, so.
But there won't be development, because we're gonna take the twenty-five thousand dollars per house that he gives us, and take the houses away, they won't exist.
But that technique is not permitted by the subdivision control law, it's not an authorized method of providing security for a project. So, it's, it's unorthodox, I guess is a good way to say it, so that's why we wanted council's opinion, whether that would be acceptable or not, and the opinion is that it's not an acceptable, acceptable way to secure the project.
So, at the last meeting, he did say he, he had done this, and what other town did you say you were doing this in?
Um, I did it in Boylston, where they let me, we called them model homes, they let me build three model homes, prior to pavement, you know, we, we started them during infrastructure.
I'm really wishing we had allowed that, I wish we had talked more about allowing that to happen, I don't remember exactly what the argument was against it, I'm sure we had a good one, because we didn't allow it.
So, the point of the security is to finish the, you know, the ways and the utilities, not to remove homes that are incomplete if the developer goes bankrupt.
Right, but the point of the security is to finish the ways and the, and the utilities in a subdivision, that's going to become a town road, not in a private condominium complex.
Well, we're treating this as if it were a subdivision for that purpose, because you have twenty-two potential buyers who are gonna be stuck with a road that is in poor condition, and that they then would have to, with their own funds, pay to complete the road, whereas by providing security, there are funds on hand to, to do that, to finish the road.
I don't see how he's selling those houses with no road going to them, I could see taking deposits.
Yeah, I, I, so the, the houses that I start, that I could probably not enter into a purchase and sale agreement with those houses, I could take a deposit, but not enter into a binding purchase and sale agreement, which doesn't put the town at any risk, from Bill's point of view there, so there's no real buyer for that particular house.
I don't see a buyer writing a check on, I'd want a purchase and sale.
Well, that's, that's usually what happens, people don't enter into purchase and sales until they can see it, feel it, and touch it.
Exactly.
I mean, they'll come in and put a deposit on, and we don't really take deposits, we take reservations, so it's not, and it says that.
How do you get a loan, how do you get a loan to buy a condo in there, if there's?
They can't.
No, yeah.
They can't.
No road price.
So that could be a stipulation, where the developer doesn't enter into any purchases and sales with any potential buyers, until the binder is in.
Let me ask you this.
I still don't think that takes care of the issue that town council is concerned with.
On those projects you did where you built the model homes, what do, what do you end up doing there for the road, do you just build the road up to the point where the, where the model homes are, and just let it stop right there, until you finish construction on the rest of it, or how did that work?
Well, if I remember correctly, the last one, we, we started the roadway, it was, it's a loop road, it's a horseshoe, and we started the infrastructure on the low side, and we built the first three model homes on the upper side, so that there was no conflict there. So by the time they came through with the utilities, the houses were already built, and, you know, we were, the exteriors were already built, and we were working on interiors, but there was no interference, and then, once all the utilities were in, and everything was inspected, and signed off by the reviewing engineer, which was Graves on that project also. Then when we put our binder down, we sold two out of the three houses, and we kept one of them as our model through, I just sold the model two days ago. The, the subdivision is, there's twenty-six houses sold out of thirty right now, and the model was the twenty-sixth house I just sold, two days ago.
But is that a subdivision, or is that a condominium complex?
No, it's a condominium, it's, it's the same, it's the same.
Same model as well?
Yeah, yeah, there was thirty, and now, when the one I'm doing in Shoesbury's twenty-five, and, and in Shoesbury, there is no security for the infrastructure.
So I think to the board, what we were discussing, when he brought his original proposal of model homes, I think we were concerned about setting a precedent, where any developer might be able to come and say, look, I want, I want you to allow me to build a couple of houses before I put the street in, because I wanna be able to showcase them, and use them, and we thought that would not be a good idea, I'm now wondering whether or not this would be a different situation, because of the fact that it's a condominium complex.
So, so, Mr. Heinz, so, based on this opinion from town council, then, it, it's, it's sounding to me like they want us, and I think it's Bill's opinion too, that they want us to treat this as a subdivision, so.
I'm fine, I'm perfectly fine with that.
So if you, if you're willing to do that, and get all the, all the bonds in place you need for, for the infrastructure and the roadway, you know, that takes care of what, what the, I think what the, what the town council's looking for, so if you did that, Bill, would it be, in your, your opinion, that the twenty-five, if, if he did that, would it still be necessary to add the twenty-five thousand dollars?
No, no, that wouldn't be necessary.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Horn, the only problem I see with that is, is that the bonding would be after the infrastructure was completed.
You wanna start before.
Correct, Bill? The, the, whatever's left, once the, the binder pavement is down, is what gets bonded.
Yeah, that's how I, that's how I envision it, it's, it's for completion after that point, isn't it?
Well, typically, there's a covenant in place, which secures the project, and then a developer builds the subdivision roads and the utilities, and then comes in for lot releases, and at that point, an estimate is prepared for what it would cost to finish the road, for that portion of the subdivision. But in this case, we're not really talking about a covenant, so we need an equivalent form of security, which would be an amount for the entire cost of, of the project, you know, the roads and utilities.
Infrastructure, everything.
But that has to include the amount necessary to remove any houses.
You don't do that in, in subdivisions.
What's that?
You don't do that in subdivisions.
No, in subdivisions, we don't let them build the houses until the, the roads die.
And that's what we're, you know, we're suggesting, that he can build the houses if he provides adequate security to, to secure the project.
So, so.
Two hundred thousand dollars to build the road, we want a bond for two hundred thousand dollars, and then he can go ahead and get as many lot releases as he wants.
Okay, so then if he.
Oh, so what you're saying is, post the total bond upfront, with the, with the total amount, and then I can build the houses?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's doable.
Okay.
Can he propose it in phases?
He could.
Yeah.
So you post the total bond upfront. But I thought you just said it can't be bonded until.
Well, so I can, I, as the, as the project moves along, I can have it reduced, correct?
Yes.
As, as work gets done, so that, I mean, it's gonna be more of a cost to me upfront, but I think in this situation, I'd be willing to do it. I'll, I'll take a look at it.
If you did what Mr. LaPage did, and what Mr. LaPage just mentioned, if you did it in phases, if you did one phase from, say, Airport Road into where that, like, crossing is on the plan, and you did another phase, the second phase would be from Dudley Hill Road into where the crossing is.
It's a lot less money upfront.
I know it.
That's a lot, a lot less.
Or is he still have to bond all the way through? Can he just bond that phase?
He, well, you know, there's water and sewer services and drainage facilities. So to do a phase, it has to be, you know, a complete semi-project unto itself. So if he could get water and sewer in, put a binder down to, say, half of the project, then that's fine. And then he could build the other half later, but he can't, you know, he's gotta be able to provide adequate services to all the lots, to all the homes.
Right.
Some of those services probably is supposed to come in from that other road, the other end, right?
Yeah, they, it has to be looped before it's, it's, it's considered complete.
So I don't see...
So, no, I, I mean, I, I'm just gonna go ahead and, 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 once I start, I'm gonna go and get the road completed as quick as possible.
I think that's doable, to do it in a quick manner.
Yes, yes, I, I, I think we can have it in, within three months, have binder down.
So if we do that...
Maybe bonding in phases isn't the right idea.
No, I, I think that, I mean, it's a great point, but I think I'll talk to a bonding company that I, I've used, I just used on two projects. So we'll see what their thought is.
So to proceed, then, we had talked about a $4,000 escrow deposit.
Yes.
So I can, so I'll need that.
Okay, I'll get it to you.
Graves Engineering, prepare the estimate for the road, which you can then take to your bank. Is that, okay?
Yeah, I guess that sounds...
Yeah.
Does someone wanna make, do we need a motion, Bill, to approve?
Well, we don't have anything to force to approve at this point, but we can proceed in that...
This new plan.
Just giving them direction.
We just, we just kinda...
I think we're all on the same page with...
Uh, no.
We're informally giving him our blessing to move forward with this new idea.
Yes.
The only, the only thing that I would, I would question is, like, from the building inspector's side, how do, how does, you know, if we're not issuing, we wouldn't issue lot releases right away, but he wants to build a house right away.
So it's all done.
Would we just send a letter to the building inspector saying it's...
The whole project is bonded. He can go ahead and get...
It's okay if he wants to issue the building drawings.
Yes.
Okay. And we, ultimately, we hold...
But no COs, right?
Right.
Or he can, well, he can do COs if he's bonded.
Yes.
Yeah, so...
Okay. And then when would the, when would the lot releases come in play after?
Well, there won't be a need for lot releases.
Okay, 'cause it's a single lot. Okay, I got it. Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Have a good night.
I don't think we've ever gone on our agenda in quite this fashion, but it looks like we're nearing the end. Bill, are we at planter's plate now, do you think? Are you keeping score here?
I think that's where we are at.
Oh, good guess.
I just wanted to mention, and Bill brought this up earlier, that the complete streets plan has been approved by Mass DOT. So I think we're at the point now where we can consider actual projects based on that plan. So I think, I'm not sure when the next funding round is, but we are now eligible to apply. So we might wanna consider, you know, that list of projects and pick out what we think would be the best project to move forward with.
Justice aside, in looking at, and I've not looked at it in great depth, that master plan dating back to the year 2000, some of the same intersections that we were discussing in terms of complete streets are on the hit list in terms of the master plan. You know, that Ramsdale Road situation.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. So it's, these things have been kind of in the background now. It's maybe a chance to try to get them out of the weeds and get something done on them. That's good. Mr. Horn?
Through the chair, Bill, the, so the, the plan's approved, but if we wanna make a submission to Mass DOT for a project, don't we have to have all of our engineering done in, in place? So that's why I was saying that we, I think we need to get to a board of selectmen meeting and explain to them where we are with this current situation, 'cause there's what, there's, if I remember right, there's $400,000 per year for four years? Up to?
Well, I'm not sure about the four-year part, but you can apply every year.
Okay. So there's a potential for $1.6 million worth of sidewalk and road improvements if we can get the engineering done upfront, which you were saying you thought would probably be in a 10% to 20% range? So, I mean, if we're looking at, you know, so we're looking at 160 to $320,000 worth of engineering work that needs to be done.
How much of which we're responsible for?
That, that amount is what we're responsible for.
That's what I thought. I remember that.
So the program only pays for construction.
Right, so that means going before the powers that be and saying...
So I think you'd wanna propose a project that could be completed with $400,000 unless the town had extra money and wanted to kick in. So then you would have to pay for the engineering.
In Dudley Law?
Host agree. It's host agree.
I was just gonna say, we have solar, you know, we have solar farms in town that are, that have host agreement. We have marijuana facilities that are gonna have host agreements. I mean, it's, it's a little of an investment for the town to get, to reap a bigger benefit.
Sure.
But I think we need to let them know that this is something that's coming, and that we need to have their support to fund it, 'cause the planning board unfortunately does not have a budget.
I just hope they think as long-term as we are.
I think we may, would we, be in order for us to come to some agreement amongst ourselves, at least in terms of a priority, before we went before the board of selectmen?
Oh, yeah. We definitely have to do that.
As mentioned earlier, in terms of our salesmanship, maybe we've been a little lacking in that in the past, and we might have to...
And maybe we don't look at a $400,000 project for our first project. Maybe we look at a $100,000 project, and then we're looking at $10,000 worth of engineering work. And, you know, once they see what, what can be done with the, with the project scope, then they'll be like, thinking bigger down the road.
Take a small bite to begin with, and then move it up the ladder. No, that's an excellent point, and I think maybe we could put that on the agenda for our next meeting to try and see if we can't focus on one thing and...
How do you even, without having any engineering done, how do you even begin to figure out?
Well, I think that they've given us, if I remember, they've given us some estimates, haven't they, Bill?
Some of them have estimates.
They do? Okay.
So, I mean, we can look at that, and we might actually go back to CMR PC and see if they can provide some more detail if we feel the need for it. These people are very accommodating.
So a lot of times, you're able to get engineering firms to do some engineering upfront with an anticipation that they will get the full engineering at the end of the project. You can't finagle engineering work that way.
Yeah, like an estimate out of them.
All right.
But the thing I was gonna mention also is, and for the people that don't know, is I believe the improvements that were made to Center Road for, in and around Nichols College, was exactly like this. This, it was on the TIPS, is that what they call it, TIPS?
TIP.
Yeah, it was a TIPS project. And at, and at that time, Nichols College paid for all the engineering work, because it was directly benefiting them. No, I mean, some of these projects that we discussed, like putting a sidewalk from, from Tan Yard Road to Park and Shop, would also benefit Nichols College. They have kids that go walk that way down to Park and Shop. So maybe if that's, I don't know what that is for a project, but if that's, let's just say, an $80,000 project, and it's $10,000 to engineer it, maybe Nichols College would be willing to pay, pay the bill to do that, 'cause it's gonna benefit them.
Perhaps even Whiskey Rocks might have some vested interest in that, too. Traffic moving.
Tan Yard Road to Park and Shop?
That's quite a haul.
I don't think we could do that for $10,000.
For a sidewalk?
I don't know.
That's a long way.
It's, it's a long distance.
Yeah, but I don't think, you're not talking a lot of money per foot for sidewalks.
Must be a linear foot price.
Yeah, yeah. It's nothing like, I mean, a street, to build a subdivision street, you're talking about $400 a linear foot.
I'm gonna check on that tomorrow.
But to build a sidewalk, it's not that expensive.
We'd put our man on it over here.
We have many talents at this table. There's no doubt of that, and utilize them all.
I'll call Mr. Perrin.
Don't lose that area code. All right. Bill, anything else in planter's plate?
The only other thing I would mention is that we did have a pre-application meeting on the Stevens Mill project, with numerous department heads sitting at the table with the engineers, voicing concerns of the town departments as to what they thought would be important to, for the engineers to take into account in that project. So they got a lot of good information from that meeting. They are gonna go back and continue to work on their, their site plan and special permit submission. So I don't have a timeframe yet, but I wouldn't be surprised if it was in a month or two that we get an application.
Oh, very interesting.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to know whether or not the town planner was able to bring up at that meeting the idea of maybe having a sidewalk that came from West Main Street and went along the river, and then came back out that back parking lot, to correct that issue that we were talking about where that sidewalk, where you have to step off the road, the road to go, 'cause of, 'cause of the building. And at the same time, if you could envision that sidewalk, having park benches along it, so that people could sit and look out at the beautiful, right across the river, to the beautiful project Webster was able to build and do.
Right. We are talking about that very, very thing.
Okay.
Good. To carry that thought further, maybe there's even some possibility of extending that riverwalk sort of concept down towards the marijuana facility, and those people throwing some money into that end.
I had forgotten about that lot.
And then you, then your kayak is gonna be launched.
I had forgotten about that lot. I should've put that when we were talking about the, you know, to-do list that we were talking about.
Well, that's not cast in stone. We can get back to that. Anything else, Bill, or are we...
No, that's it.
Complete registry of deed signature forms.
So you know what that is, right? It's every year, registry, when an election takes place and you have new members, they want a new form completed, so that when signatures and plans come in, they can verify that that person's authorized to sign the form. So I mean...
Is that just members only by name, or is it by office?
It's members.
Members, okay.
You have authorized me to sign plans, so I would ask to sign that form as well.
All right.
So I have a copy of the form here.
And I think in the past, our practice has been we've signed the minutes that we've approved as well. And I don't think we had any copy circulating, at least that I recall. Mr. Shinaki, I apologize, we've kind of let you down a little bit there. So we approved June 9th, was it, and the, uh, and the 26th of May, so if we...
Was on us? Bill, is this, is this the one you want to sign?
Yes, I have, I have an original here. So if any member would sign this form...
Two copies, Bill, or one?
Just one.
Just one, okay. All righty, well, that's, is, so that...
You can sign it, because you'll be sworn in.
Yeah.
So that, that covers our responsibilities there. Roles and responsibilities of planning and appeals board, and you had a PowerPoint presentation. I think, given the time of day, maybe we defer that for future reference and...
I appreciate that, by the way.
Okay, here we go.
That stinks. I love PowerPoints.
So my, my thought is that it's, it's a very concise description of what your duties are. So it's a good refresher course for existing members.
It's a good for all of us.
For the new members, it's a nice overview of what, what planning boards do.
I thought one of the, I did look at it briefly. I think one of the things that I thought was a benefit is it ties it back to the general law in Massachusetts, so that, you know, that we understand that we don't exist of and in and of ourselves, that we are bound to responsibility for public, for the general law. Okay, comments from the planning board. Mr. LaPage?
I think I'm commented out.
All right. Mr. Wetroba?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if it's not out of order at this time, I'd like to do something that I feel I was amiss at doing at the last planning board meeting, which is thanking Mr. Edmiston for all his time on the board and serving as chair. I think he, he did a really great job in that position, and I wanna wish him well.
Thank you, Mr. Wetroba. I echo your comments. I thought Mr. Edmiston did conduct himself as a gentleman. He kept us on the straight and narrow as best anyone possibly could, kept us focused, and his expertise and knowledge certainly will be missed. And with that, I will offer again another welcome to our newest member, Mr. Shinaki, and hope that we can continue as well as possible in the absence of our former leader and with the aid of our new member. Mr. Horn? Good. Hey, Mr. Shinaki, you got some words for us?
Oh, I'm good today.
All right, you're gonna save your thunder for later then, okay. Comments from the audience? I don't think that's very likely. Okay, well, this one's for that.
Mr. Chair, do you wanna do the reorganization vote tonight, or do you wanna wait for Mr. Horn to be sworn in as a voting member?
I don't know. Let's see, what's the sense of the board in terms of...
Probably shouldn't wait, because if anybody's gonna nominate him for anything, that would be a problem, correct?
You could nominate him.
He could accept, but he, could he accept?
Yes, but he couldn't vote.
He couldn't vote? Well, that's true. Okay.
But it's up to you whether you, you know, would you wanna do that now, or...
I don't know. It's late.
In the, in the past, when things like this happened, when I was on the planning board, we just waited till the next meeting. I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't get...
I think it makes more sense.
Okay, so we'll defer action on the reorganization until our next meeting. And to bring that to the floor, we are, next meeting is scheduled for July 14th, 2021, Bastille Day. We should have some champagne or something.
That'll be the only meeting in July.
The only meeting in July, all right. All right, then we have approval of consultant vouchers, payment of bills, have...
I do have some invoices.
All right.
I don't think the minutes went around either.
Yeah, we need a couple copies of those. Looking around, looking all the way around. We get to sign a lot of things, Mr. Shinaki. And I think the mystery is that many of our signatures are pretty much illegible, so we need to have some cover there. Sense things are coming. This is, someone left this one, the person with the keys.
I think it was, yeah, I realized that.
Two copies here. Two copies here.
Oh, you beat me to it.
Well, I'm gonna hand it right back to you.
Well, one, one copy just...
While you're working on your binder.
Okay, here's one. Yeah, I think that's completely chutney if it's not. All right, I've signed two. Did I sign the same one twice? You know, pass this one along. On the back. We may end up with an extra somewhere along the way, Bill.
It's okay.
More is better than... Oh, maybe not. Okay.
So the two invoices are both from Graves. One is for the Fish Road peer review, the preliminary plan, that was in the amount of And the second invoice is from Graves for Lions Estates Primary Construction Supervision in the amount of $3,385.10.
What's that dated for?
Construction supervision?
So I'll pass around the detailed invoice. So I'll pass around the detailed invoice. It's broken down by dates and hours.
Construction supervision, does that cover, did they supervise any of the things that were brought up by the sewer board?
They don't inspect water and sewer mains. That's up to the department.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, you're short one sign-off sheet for the June 9th meeting.
We are?
Yes.
Well, we can't have that happen. Let's see, I think I submitted mine.
Stephen, I have it here, observing binder payment operation. $9.25.
Send that around.
$980, so it adds up. So I need a motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll need a motion.
Okay.
Well, I can pass these around first if you want to.
No, it's okay.
Anyone care to make a motion with regards to the invoices for Graves Engineering?
I'll make a motion that we accept the invoices from Graves Engineering.
A second?
Approve them for payment.
And approve them for payment.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Anybody, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And that's four one.
Okay. Thank you, Russell.
Other town notices?
Excuse me?
Other town notices?
Well, just, you know, that the town hall is open again?
Yeah.
Without, you need to, they're to sample to them.
There's two in there.
Okay. So town hall's open as normal hours as before. I sent you information from the Attorney General about the COVID, the state of emergency being lifted.
Right.
Initially, there was a thought that that would eliminate the ability to meet remotely. But a day or so later, the legislature voted to extend those provisions so that you can meet remotely if you choose to. But I think it's the preference of the board to meet in person and live. You do have the ability for remote meetings for a while if you feel that's necessary.
All right, we, okay, so we'll keep that under advisement. Hopefully, no need to do that again. It's an interesting experience, and hopefully it's one we've come past or passed. Other correspondence? Okay. Then, if it's the board's pleasure, a motion to adjourn might be in order.
I want to make your first, though.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
That's a good start. Everybody likes that.
There we go.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion made to adjourn and seconded. Any discussion? I suspect not. All in favor? Aye. And that is four with one abstention.